Prairie City Council for Mark Sucka, 2020. Order please. We have a call. Item three is items for review and discussion. Item three A is community development. The park is with their discussions on three A one is discuss local match requirements for DCA housing grant. Mr. Wood first up.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Our consultant is preparing a, an application for 2020 community development block grant for the second area in the Creekwood neighborhood. And this area will consist of properties that front on Creekwood Drive, Winchester Road, Circle, King Boulevard, and there's another little cul-de-sac at the end, and I've forgotten the name of that. But that's the area that they're, that she's looking at. I don't believe there is a match requirement anymore for community development block grants, but she thinks that it's, it would look better if there is some match. What she has told me is that based on looking at the properties there, that she is at about seven hundred, just below $750,000 of renovations that would be needed in the area. There is one or two houses that potentially could be demolished, and she is suggesting that the city provide a $10,000 match to that $748,000 grant. So that would be a little less than a one and a half percent match. And so I wanted to come to you to see if you're, if that's agreeable to you to move forward with that $10,000 match. And that would be used, I believe, for demolition, if there's any demolition.
So what about her fees on?
So in the community development block grant, the, her fees are paid out of grant. That is just on the chip grant where we're responsible for, for most of her fees.
So we have never had to, under a block grant, we've never had to have any matching fund?
No, I think that is a change here. I think it's been required to be 10% or more.
That's what I thought, but they're not requiring anything?
Apparently not. She's, she thinks that the application will look better in, in the eyes of DCA if there is some, some community money there, but we're not required to just my understanding.
Well, that is quite a change because it was my understanding, you know, we've always said put 10% in somewhere or the other side of it, all the money that we get put in for stormwater abatement and stuff like that. For last year, the 2019 grant. So this is all the, the funding they'll ask for, for the potential three quarters of a million dollars is 10, is $10,000.
That's correct. That's, yes, in, in addition to fee waivers and those types of costs, but $10,000 to go directly towards the grant.
So, but what, what is our, I mean, we, I mean, do we know what our total commitment? That's different.
Yes, I don't remember, I'm not sure if I know the total number of houses that she's looking at, but the tenant fees are typically about $350 we would waive for each house. And that's a plus or minus number.
For this grant, like $10,000 per house?
No, that is $10,000 total that she's, she's recommending that we pledge for the $748,000 grant.
And so we actually pay the demolition cost ourselves. It's not under our normal program where we, we condemn one and demolish it and then we take a lien against the property, is what we typically do or not.
Right. This would, yes, this would be us paying for the demolition of, of that house or two houses, depending on what the cost condition.
So going back, is there additional outside of just us waiving the fees? Are there additional things that we're providing as a city service that is in addition to the $10,000 and are, I'm just kind of looking at what are, what's our total cost of commitment against that?
I don't know that. I will have to get that for you and bring it back to you tomorrow.
Okay.
We do have for your consideration tomorrow, a resolution regarding the grant. So I will get that additional, any additional fees or any kind of services that we're.
I'm just, I'm just curious.
I'll, I'll have that for you tomorrow.
Has that been our past practice in this regard, waiving the fees and doing the 10%?
Well, I think the 10%, the waiving of the fees was part of the 10%, wasn't it, Mr. Gilmore?
Okay.
And we also use some SPOSS money.
Yeah, let me, let me back up. We don't waive fees.
Okay.
We pay those fees or in essence pay ourselves from some other funding source.
Okay.
Because I understand from our discussion this afternoon, much of the money that was the matching fund last year for the Baird Street area in that area came out of SPOSS because it was stormwater abatement. It was work that we were doing on the streets and curbs and gutters and going in and ditching and stuff like that. So it was, as I understand, actual work that we were even either doing or was paid for out of SPOSS money.
Okay.
And we did waive the fees last year and we paid them from somewhere.
Okay, so going back and looking at the 2019 application, we had, you had agreed to match $100,000. And looking at that, her breakdown in there, there's $100,000 for engineering fees and drainage construction, drainage and street construction. There's also a separate category for the fee modifications, whether it's a waiver or whatever.
As far as this concern, it's a fee waiver.
So it was more than a hundred, more than $100,000. $100,000 is in the engineering work and the construction part. And then there are additional money, so I'll, but I'll check all of that and hand that to you tomorrow for this proposed grant.
At what point does the property owner's matching that we talked about earlier?
I think that's interesting, rental properties that where we have rental properties that we agreed to, they like to put a what, a 25?
So with, with, the grant goes to, to homeowners. And I believe in the past, there has been some requests for the homeowner to provide some matching monies. I'm not sure if that's, I saw something the other day that I think that may have been either gone away or been reduced as to how much they would pay. And I think that depends on their income level. If it's a rental property and the owner of the property has to play, has to put in 50% of the cost, the grant will pay the other 50%.
What if we will put in that 50%?
Then we don't do anything. Yeah. And she's already talked to all of the property owners that would, that she's included in this grant. So they're, at this point, they have pledged that they would, because as we've seen in the past, some property owners say yes upfront, and then we get, get to the point of doing the work and they don't want to be involved. So we have to, she has to work with finding other properties within that defined area to spend that money or, or work hard with those property owners to get them back on board. But, but yes, she's already, she's already talked to the property owners that she thinks need the help and, or, or need the help based on the condition of the homes and determine block type value each the grant would need to spend on each house. And that's where she's got the $748,000.
I understand you're correct here. They pay that money upfront before we start working on it?
No.
You may not get it then.
Well, well, the city, this, I'm not sure, is bringing it here? I think there's, the way that, I don't think we get all of the money upfront, but there is work that is done that the administrator inspects to ensure that, that the work, the work that is being invoiced has been completed and completed correctly. And the administrator, Ms. Kirks, then submits a, an invoice to the city. We check that to verify that it's correct and then make that request to DCA. And DCA then funds that, sends us the money to then pay out that invoice, is the way I understand that.
Your question is a property owner, but when, when do you get the 50% from the rental or the person who agrees to?
And I'm not positive about that. The only experience that I've had with that was with Mr. Strout over in Sand Hill. And I know that he was providing checks to us, to the city, to hold an escrow or whatever until he had the full 50%. I'm not sure whether the work was done during that time or not, or if it started after he had the full 50%.
Another question then, have all the people that are supposed to pay on this last grant that we've completed, did all of them pay up?
To my knowledge, they have.
Okay, so we got a good record?
Yes, yes. That's something I can check with Sherri on, but I'm pretty sure that, that that's been taken care of. That would be part of the audit that takes place, and I would think that that's been, that she's handled that, but I'll clarify that.
Thank you. Going back on the chip grants, I know this is not where you're talking about, but I just had a question relative to that. Excuse me. Now this, we have to pay her fees, do we not? Because she has a $12,000 fee for applying for this year's chip grant.
That's correct. If, if we receive that grant, if she administers that, then we will have a $12,000 payment to her.
Yeah. Is there a matching, is there a matching fund for chip this year or is there?
No, there has never been a matching fund for chip. But this year they changed it so that we have, do have to pay some portion of, of the administrator's fee.
So, but we, I don't know what the total number was, but her fee is 4% of whatever we get. I think that's.
That's correct.
What we agreed to and what we signed was we would pay 4% on an estimated $300,000 chip grant.
That's correct.
And if it's 400, we'll pay her $16,000 in, in cash and so on.
But she's only applying for $300,000.
Okay, so, and then on, on our sand hill right now, we're doing a good bit of demolishing homes?
Yes.
Is that part of our match that we're paying?
Yes, I believe it was the 2017 CBG grant that we had a $25,000 match for demolition. And we have two homes that are, either have started demolition or about to start demolition. And that is, I believe, around $17,000.
And I think they're about a piece.
And then there is one more that we have finally gotten the property owner to realize that this is a better deal for him. It's going to have to be torn down one way or the other. And if he gets the grant to pay for it, then.
But it's not going through our normal demolition process. We're not going to take a lien against the property. We're actually going to spend $25,000 of our grant money to clean up those abandoned homes and with their agreement.
That's correct, yes. With that grant, they have, the administrator has some leeway to pay the property owner a little bit of money for the building. They use the grant money to demolish it, clean up the site, and then the property owner still retains the property. So that's how that works through the grant process.
Chip and block. Chip and block. Keep them sober, you know, just trying. Make good look.
So I'll, I'll have that for you, quick council tomorrow.
Item three A two is House and Lake Drive sidewalks. Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, Mayor, Council. Good afternoon. Um, I have a request by the city manager to look at House and Lake Drive sidewalks. That is the section from down here of, I guess, the Clinchfield Park or Third Street Park there up to Swift Street where Lumpen Shell is. And there's a portion of sidewalk there that ends, it doesn't continue. I went out and did an initial assessment, came back and determined that we need to complete some survey and engineering to complete that section of sidewalk. And those totals that I reached out to Rick Saunders, who typically is our engineer we use for sidewalks of 12 to $8,270. And just like to get your direction.
Okay, but I think the other thing too, going back to support documentation, is the impact that has to be addressed with that sidewalk extension. That's, that's the primary reason why this is before council today.
There are some challenges there, and I can address those. Uh, the first one is there's some storm boxes that are concerns along Lumpen Shell, along the area. There's a couple in the road where your sidewalk would be. The second one, there's a hydrant that is placed directly where the sidewalk would be, would need to be relocated. There's several large trees that would need to be removed. And then there's some brading issues from the hill and to do with cross slopes of the sidewalks and ADA compliance. So there's several items that need to be addressed and would be picked up on survey and really need a design engineer to make sure we meet proper compliance and state guidelines.
And those would all be an additional cost to the 200-ish?
No, these are all included in that design work. So when we get through with this, with the design work, we'll be able to get a bid for the project. And then the, of course, we would have their calls to actually install the sidewalk.
Are most of the tree, those large trees own the right of way?
A portion of them are, a portion of them are. The closest part is.
There's that big pine tree, and then there's another bigger tree a little further down.
Well, you know, Mr. Gilmore, one of my concerns is how close we're going to be coming to the house in the triangle there at Carroll Alley and House and Lake Road. Because I'm, you know, that, that house is right on that right of way. If we go in there, I just, you know, how close we're going to be coming to that house.
We can set the sidewalk right up to the back of the curb if you need to, and there would be enough room to get by. Is it, when we get the survey word, we can probably tell a little closer. I think it's feasible.
It's going to be very expensive.
It will be expensive if we have to start moving hydrants and cutting trees. It gets, it gets into some cost questions.
Well, I got a question then. Once we get all that information, I think that looking at that area that we are talking about, right down from where that park is.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so now, it can't stop right there, not go all the way to, to Lumpen Shell. It don't, look like it didn't need to come all the way down there anyway.
We can stop it, but according to ADA compliance and trace, we might have to tune in with it. But you have to have an exit for your sidewalks to meet ADA compliance. So we can't just now, unfortunately with new guidelines, we can't just terminate the sidewalk. And we cannot direct traffic out into the street without having a proper area to go out, either it be a crosswalk or another sidewalk to extend it.
See, what I was, what I was thinking, of course, I don't know anything about this kind of stuff, but the liquor store is that building, it couldn't stop right along there somewhere?
We could end it, um, as it enters into the.
Carroll Alley.
Carroll Alley, there along with the alley and Lumpen Shell parking lot, we could just stop there. I, I think that we still will have these major concerns of the, the grave, the hydrant, and the trees to continue with, with some of those.
I know people were complaining about that, that they had to walk out of the street in order to get down there. And that's, that's one of the problems was that it, it, it was up here on that end, but it's not down here on this end. And, you know, they had to walk out in the street or what have you. So.
Well, the, if I may, the other concern I have is going back to the deal about the ADA requirements and levels and those storm drains and lump and shell business. Because of those storm drains and ADA, if we extend that sidewalk, then you find, then Lumpen Shell is going to lose some of that regular drive. Is there a permitting with their location? Yeah, you can just drive up anywhere for the different businesses. I think with the ADA requirements and everything and those storm drains, there's going to have to be a few driveways at Phillips. Everybody with me? In other words, it's going to have to be like, almost like a regular sidewalk and possibly some type of curbing that has to go in. What I would recommend to you all right now is that we proceed with the sidewalk, but follow similar to what you're talking about, Phyllis, about having it designed to continue from its end over to Carroll Alley. Now, we'll still have to deal with the fire hydrant, we'll still have to deal with two trees, but we won't have to deal with the storm drains and the impact on Lumpen Shell. And the storm drain, you know, what it's going to cost, I don't mean to minimize it, but that storm drain work and the impact on Lumpen Shell will be a lot higher, and we may be able to avoid that at least initially. Or you can try that as the first phase of the project and then see what happens after that. Because you're right, most folks, you know, when they're, when they're coming off a swift house to lake, will just walk along Lumpen Shells and out of, out of the street. But when you get to, by the liquor store and where the Carroll Alley cuts off in there, then you got to go out into the street. Because there's no sidewalk on either side. If that makes sense to you.
Yeah, we should go for Allen.
Yeah.
And go Mr. Gilmore to run it.
I agree with his comments.
You have concurrence and you will terminate it as I understand it, my understanding, let me see your government, I've been real slow lately, that you're going to terminate that at Carroll Alley. And that will, will bring it from Third Street, take whatever right of way we need to do to put that in there, take the trees out, that type of stuff. And then that'll be our ADA termination point for that sidewalk. And they can flow either into the shopping center and go over to the one on Swift Street, or they can walk through Lumpen Shell and wherever they want to.
Sure, makes sense.
I just want to make sure that's what we're doing. Finished it?
But we'll, once the, you know, I understand, my understanding is that's going to be concurrence with the council. And once we have the survey done, we'll be back to show you. So if that makes sense and works and all that kind of stuff.
Correct on you, and you'll have a surprise too?
Probably so.
We'll be able to get Esther here.
Item three B is the office of the city manager. Three B one is consider appeal of a downtown developer. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Council, in your report pack is a memo from me that I, following up on discussion I had with a developer owner downtown. And that developer owner had two issues based on some renovation work that needed to be done. Want to go back a little bit, we'll have some discussion, but a lot of this is not necessarily an appeal to council for you to take any action because some of it you legally may not have the power to. But that developer did want you all to be aware of it and see if there's something you could do to correct it. First item is I've listed there is the interior ramp or his front access door. It's my understanding either he had or he installed a residential door rather than a commercial door, and consequently there is a lift that you have on that door. And building inspection is requiring him to install a ramp to meet ADA requirements. And also just from a common business standpoint, to avoid a trip hazard for your customers who are coming in. In my discussions with him, he had indicated it was okay about putting the ramp on the outside going up to the door, but not inside. So consequently, you could have a ramp and then you have a drop. So you could have somebody coming in and stumbling and a bigger problem going back out and tripping. ADA regulations do not allow that to be done, and so I've advised him, as he was advised by Mr. Hester, that he did make adjustments for that lift inside the store. And there is a series of options, I believe that's correct, Mr. Hester?
And he has done that, so.
Okay, but he wanted to mention to you that he had an issue with that. His second issue is with the required Knox box on the building that he had. It originally was all one use. I think it had two different doors going in, but one use. He has changed that over to now there are two totally separate spaces. And we require, as far as the regular building inspection, although this particular case comes from the fire marshal, that you have to have a Knox box for each of the locations. Number one, there is a requirement underneath the minimum code requirements, the fire code, that there has to be some type of box provided there for a key to have access in. The state does not say it has to be a Knox box, but you have to have some type of box. We require the Knox boxes to be installed because that's what we have used for a number, at least a decade, maybe more, with the city of Perry all over the place. So consequently, the fire department only has to have one key to go in. The purpose of the box is to allow fire or potentially police or any other responders going in to have access and then have a key to get in the entranceway or whatever the door is. If you don't have that, depending on what the situation is, then the door has to be broken down and torn up. The reason we require a box for each location is at another facility, we ran into an issue about a, or what they call it, it's basically a community box, and the keys weren't correct. They didn't always have keys in there. There were problems and all kinds of stuff. The developer or owner of the building has a tenant for one side, but not the other as of yet. But it is totally built out and developed to be totally separate location. In other words, it's a full wall, you know, separating, but there's no door in between or anything like that. So the administration's recommendation to you all that you affirm or concur that yes, well, number one, there isn't anything to be done about the ADA, that's a requirement, and you concur about the Knox box. Assuming that you do, we will be getting you an amendment for our building standards or wherever it would apply that was clearly specified that's required.
That was, that was going to be my question. Currently, we don't have that in writing that you must have a Knox box. It's not, they were not told that from the get-go. It was just a question.
Yeah, it's, when we do plan reviews, that's part of our notations on everything that we review. I was not aware of the individual Knox box per tenant space from her door. I had that discussion with Mr. Gilmore, and he brought me up to speed on that because the code does allow for a gang box. But it only makes sense, and he, he gave the perfect example.
Right.
If, if the fire department or EMS or police open that box and the keys are not labeled correctly, that's just a hindrance in the amount of time that it takes to rescue someone. So I'm certainly in concurrence that we stick to the one door, one Knox box.
Yes, so my, my point was only have we told people in advance?
Yes, ma'am.
Because you don't have to.
To the best, with the best we can.
Okay.
It's part of our notations when we do plan reviews.
Okay.
And, and, and they're advised by the fire marshal that that's.
Absolutely.
That needs to be a Knox box.
Right, that's, that's what the issue is in.
I think as long as we have the things we're going to require in writing and we give it to the person before they get started, then they've already, you know, agreed. If they got started, then they've agreed to what you've given them in writing.
And I, and I think the only confusion here is one box versus two. The Knox box, there's a requirement in NFPA that the box meet a certain UL listing. I've done the research recently. I've only found Knox to be the one that actually meets that requirement out of the code. There may be others, but it's certainly not in our part of country.
Which is how we got to the Knox box in the first place.
And it's my understanding that they don't have common keys, so if you got Knox boxes on this thing and something else on their side, then the fire department's got to carry multiple keys to get in, so. If we're going to require, we ought to require one type and, you know, for each leased facility. I mean, it's, it's a different business altogether, so. So council, what is your preference on item one? We do not have a choice. That is ADA, and I understand he's already committed compliance on that.
He has, sir. He has, sir, he's complied with that.
Inside and out?
Inside and out. He had already done the outside before this discussion really came up, but he was assuming that he didn't have to do the inside, but actually, the inside was worse than the outside, so.
I'm the person that would have fallen on the inside.
It's, it's a severe tragedy.
I'm prone to do that, so.
I'm glad you got it fixed, though.
Thank you, I might go in there now.
I concur with each building, or each storefront or whatever, they don't have Knox boxes too, because last thing they need to do is have problems to get into.
Try to figure out.
Because from the vantage point of safety, because the citizens pay more, and for their stuff too.
If I may, my, in this, I don't want to stir the pot, but his argument is, is he has two doors in there side by side, so he should only provide one door. But if we're going to do the single-door, single-tenant thing, he needs to provide two.
But the reality, they're not.
There's only about a, either tenant separation between.
And there's, that, whatever it is, but one Knox box on this wall and the other Knox boxes on the other wall, it's not like, it's in the center of the two doors.
Well, how much is a Knox box? About three hundred?
Yeah, they're four hundred, four fifty by the time they charge the delivery and tax and such.
And they can do up to sixteen hundred.
Depending on which side.
This is just a small one, that, you know, just has the door key in it. But if you got multiple keys, say you're operating a large, you know, type of production facility, you got multiple keys or whatever, then it could be, the box could be bigger, can it not, chief?
Yes, sir.
I've looked at some of them that are fairly large in size.
Well, a larger tenant space could potentially have a sprinkler room or alarm rooms that are locked separately from the tenant space itself. There's, there's multiple reasons to go upsize in some cases.
But the minimum is about four fifty, so. Is everybody okay with us enforcing the recommendation on item?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 3B2 is consider appeal for disposing of yard debris on city property. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, speaking of residents having difficulties with change, I was approached by a gentleman who lives over on the west side of I-75 in the city. He came to see me, very concerned about the fact that he was report, he was recorded on, and I think it was the police in this particular case came by, because he was dumping his yard debris over on city property, which currently is a vacant parcel, but is designated as the community park. Some of y'all may remember, we took the lock over in that area, but the park and everything. I asked him why he was concerned about that, and he said, because he's always been able to dump that yard debris over there. And I said, well, that's true, but it's not your property. And he said, well, it really shouldn't matter, because it's the city's property, and the sanitation folks come by and pick it up every week, which is true, our folks do do that. I think this is a very good example, and we're gonna probably have some others in other areas, about what historically residents have been able to do in Perry, but because of our size and change and all that type of stuff, you can't do anymore. I'd just like to get concurrence or affirmation that people can't dump their yard debris on our property. I'm not, I know it seems like a no-brainer, but just to have it concurred with, because comparatively, I don't know about recently, but we had a fairly substantial problem when residents were dumping their yard debris on the Perry Country Club property over there. I mean, there'd be long lines of stuff out there, well, that's now our park. And so with your concurrence, I will advise this gentleman and anybody else that public property is not free property for your particular use on dumping or any of that other type of stuff.
You know, very late, that's another issue come up, is that people in the community jumping their garbage on other people's property.
Yes.
And so I don't know, I think we need to address that somehow, we need to get a letter and let other residents know that, yes, because I got a vacant piece of property, don't bring your property and put it on my property. And if you, it's happening in our community, a lot of people have not come to the city to address it, but a lot of people are doing that, because if you have, like you said, they put it on city property, because for some reason, he figured that was okay, but then a lot of people are putting it on other people's property, because they got a vacant piece of property, instead of just putting it on their side, for their property, they 'll bring it across the street and put it on somebody else's property.
That's true, I got a tree on the other side, sitting over there, across the street from my house, on my vacant lot, with a sofa sitting on it.
But see, that's what...
Not mine!
But we need to address it some kind, I just, I'm bringing that to our attention, somehow we need to get a letter and address it to the people in our community, that maybe they might not think, but it's not right for you to start putting your, your garbage or your debris on somebody else's property. And some people will complain, or they'll come down, you know, file, file a complaint on you, I mean, but I think we need to, to address that and let folks know, because, like you said, the city's growing, and people are getting away with a lot of stuff, I don't wanna be, be the devil out here, but sometimes we might have to start addressing things and letting the people know that it's time for a change, you know, because he, a lot of things are changing in our community, and some people are not up for the changes, so we just wanna have to put it out there and let them know that.
Interesting. All right, we have concurrence, that we would prefer that citizens not dump their yard debris on city property. If you would advise us, the person?
Well, my understanding is not just prefer.
No.
Is that we'll start to take action.
Yes, that's, I mean, right.
Okay.
We do not want them to talk on city property.
We need to let them know that, make sure, we do get a letter, let them know that they're willing to act and take it.
Item... If I may, kind of going back on that, some of you all may remember, we were having a problem with that on Macon Road, some of the apartment complexes.
Oh, yeah.
And we went out and did exactly what you're talking about doing now, and we advised those apartment complexes, if they were gonna pay for that, no matter what. If they say, well, it's not mine, or it's not on my property, then we said, it's close enough, and it looks like stuff that comes out, and generally, that issue has pretty much gone away now, so.
I think that the code enforcement has put some warning signs on locations which are typical dumping sites, like over on Corimba Road, there was a site there that...
Every one, you're right.
And there's a sign there, and I know there's one behind your church...
That's right.
Where there's historically been a dumping area, that they have placed a sign there that says a warning that this is not a, do not dump here, so some action has been already taken. Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Item 3B3 is consider possible names for Heritage Park and the new park, which would be the one out at Cherokee High's Country Club, so, Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, in your board pack are two items requesting that you consider. The first one would be to rename Heritage Park, which is the one out on 341 west side of I-75, where the amphitheater is going in. Originally, when that name came up, it made sense, because we didn't have similar names someplace else, but also council had not defined and came up with the whole concept and everything of the legacy park, which we now have. And so the administration's recommendation to you is that you consider another name other than Heritage Park. The one we're suggesting there would be Four Oaks Park. Some of you all may remember that there are, there's a grove of four oaks that's over 200 years old, and we came back in and redesigned the amphitheater, don't remember that, you know, to avoid and save that grove and all that type of stuff, so that I think would be appropriate name, but if you'd like something else, that'd be fine, if you want to keep it Heritage Park, you can, but there's not going to be very much heritage items going in out there. Fire, fire's sake, sir.
We have been informed this evening that there's, there were five.
Five?
There were five saved, and there's another large oak just off-site that wasn't saved, but it's at the pond, so that there's, there's multiple older...
But what we really focused on was moving or saving the five oaks.
That's right, those five, those five were right there in the middle that were the older ones. But four, you kinda see when you walk up, but one of them was also, I think the oldest one kinda down in the bottom was like 350.
Five oaks.
Older.
No, no, we're not gonna include an oak that's not there anymore. So maybe that's, that's a suggestion for you all to consider.
Council members, what are your thoughts about renaming it to Five Oaks Park? So the only, I can give you the history of how it came about. It came about one afternoon between here and Athens, when I was trying to convince Mr. Joe Posey on what we need to do with the Worrell Foundation. And at that fine time, the Worrell Foundation was going to be the funding of the park, and that, you know, and, and a legacy of Mr. Worrell type thing, but they have gotten out of it, so it's really no longer, and, you know, it's no longer a Heritage Park, and it really has, you know, the Heritage Park left, and so it's probably appropriate to rename it something else. I know it, but that's the history behind it, so.
Everybody knows it by Heritage Park now, though, I mean, it's been that hollow more than a year.
Yep.
So, I mean, I just don't understand what Heritage Park is.
Most people don't, I tell them, so.
You don't know where. Five Oaks, kind of like a will.
Yeah, I like that.
What does the, does the communication department have an idea?
I concurred with the five, well, the four oaks.
We just couldn't count.
Mayor, four of us, without mud in the water, but, I mean, those oaks are kind of heritage oaks. I mean, if you wanted to keep some of the name and just add to it Heritage Oaks Park.
Or if you just wanna, or I could do Oak Valley, here's the two amphitheaters.
I could need to.
This is going to be very, good prelim to the next item.
I'm fine with five oaks.
I'm fine with five oaks.
I'm great. I'm fine too.
Dr. Albritton, what?
I don't, I mean, Heritage is what I know it by, because I go by it every day, but it doesn't, I don't know. Is there what, I guess we, it's too much trouble to let the community, that'd be too much trouble, wouldn't it?
Want to let them name it?
Yeah.
I'm a parky big park face.
It doesn't matter to me, I don't have a, I like Heritage Oaks, I like Heritage, I like four, five of them, whatever. It's hard to be, none to little.
We have a request from Mr. Hunt to allow you to sleep on it.
Hey, I'm good.
So tomorrow at pre-council, I'd like everybody to come prepared, whether they're gonna choose Five Oaks Park or Heritage Oaks Park. Is that okay?
Oh, it's fine with me. It's in the work session, isn't it?
So, Ann, you wanna add another name?
Me? I can't think of an action. How about Ran the Walk apart?
There will be no parks and no statues. I told somebody one day, I said, you know, I don't ever want a statue built, because you know what pigeons do.
You know what the public does now, they tear them down, and now they've been torn down in our nation in the last year or so. It's shilling.
So your recommendation is Heritage Oaks Park? Is that correct?
The words of the baby.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just, I mean...
He threw it out there.
I threw it out there, and it does, you don't have to keep five oaks if one of them dies, so.
Okay. Do you have the option tomorrow evening at five o'clock, I'd like for the vote to be cast? Now we'll go onto the easier ones, Mr. Gilmore.
Yes. We are getting ready to do some very visible improvements out at the, what is generically referred to as the new park, since it's our newest park. That park does not have a name from anybody. Going back, Councilmember Albritton's point about involving the public, I'm sure most of the council members are the brand-new ones, remember the public hearing we had with naming out there, and there must have been probably at least 35 different names that were submitted that ran a wide gauntlet. At that time, we asked council to take a look and see, and either narrow it down or decide, and you all went and thought about it, and apparently, you're still thinking about it, because we never did get a name for it. As we talked about with Legacy Park, the administration's recommendation is, however you want to name it, when we start having major improvements going in, the park, the area needs to have a name, so people can relate and identify to that. So going through on the list, a couple of things just to keep in mind that council generally seem to concur with, as far as I know. Number one, kind of following up on Dr. Albritton's point, the park is not going to be named after any individual, living or dead. The second thing is that, at least it's my understanding, that the park was not going to be named or have anything relative to its past history, and by that, I mean, it's not gonna be Fair Oaks Park, or Lynx Park, or Cherokee Park, or anything like that, because at least last time, as I remember when council talked about that, they wanted to make a clear distinction that this was a new facility. The second thing was that it needed to relate something to the park, so for example, one of the suggested names was Pine Lake Park, and there isn't a lake there, so why call it Pine Lake? Also, is my understanding that council did not want to have what appeared to be some relatively common type of names, for example, they were not interested in calling it Azalea Park or Magnolia Park, because you have so many of those others around. So from that, and going back on the list, you can see that I have provided, at least as a starting point, I think it's seven or so names. Sawtooth Oak Park, obviously, I love the oak stuff, but Sawtooth Oak, as far as I concern, number one, there is there. The other thing is, it is a...
How many are there? How many?
I don't know.
Forty-five Oak Park.
I know there's at least one is there.
Thank you.
But what we had, is Pitsner go back and identify all the different forms of font in the park, to get an idea about some of the variations there. One of the other names that was suggested was Oliver Park, then there's Community Park, Central Park, Pine Needle Park, that's kinda common, but it's also one of the major streets in the community over there that, that serves it. Panther Park, we all know where that came from, honestly. And then another one possibly would be Windsong Park. Going back on the day about Panther, no, it wasn't because we don't like the Hornets, but the park is pretty close to serving where the high school, the general neighborhood Certainly, any other suggestions are welcome, other than if it's something coming from Brian again. But I do think, however you want to change, or whatever name or whatever it is that you need, you'd like to have, or something like that, I do think we need to get that named and done, yes, very quick.
Yep.
I like Pine Needle, it's got a lot of pines on it. I'm not gonna lose any sleep over it now, if you don't mind.
This is something I notice, very difficult, we do need to make a decision, we, we make decisions on... We make decisions on millions of dollars very, very quickly. But naming a park seems to be difficult, so.
And that's Oliver Hester?
Yeah, it's Oliver period. Oliver Hester.
Oliver Hester, Perry.
So we have a Commodore Drive, too.
The history teacher in me loves Oliver Park. And the person that lives on Pine Needle Drive loves Pine Needle Park. Full disclosure there. Full disclosure, I may have to abstain on that one. But my choice for the history of our community would be Oliver Park with that name. Since that's who our town is literally named for, that would be mine.
Comments? We got it. Yeah, it's got to mean to you. It's got to make a difference.
Well, see, I like Oliver, and I like Panther Park. I like Windsong Park. So see, all over that, all over the place. I think I like Panther because of all those pampas that come around that road. I think that's why I like Panther.
What about Oak Park?
Well, you could be, you know, one of the recommendations is this. It can be just Sawtooth Park, too. You don't have to name it Oaks, because you already got one oak. You could name it Sawtooth Park. And that'll create a lot of questions.
Yes, it is.
Well, along those lines, I think it's also important that you have a very distinctive name for the park, because that's what people remember, and that's what they start referring it to. And that's what they tell their friends. And that's when you're marketing something, you want to have a very distinctive title.
What is it about Heritage Park?
We're on item two now.
I know.
I think that Windsong, I kind of like that, because it is a passive park. It's going to have walking trails, and it's kind of a nature sort of name, and...
It's kind of catchy.
It is.
But...
The girls like Windsong.
But if you have Five Oaks and Windsong, like, I know where Langston Road Elementary School is. It's on Langston Road, because I can connect that. But if I'm new to Perry, Five Oaks and Windsong, where are they? Which one?
We could name it Three Forty-one Park.
There you go.
Except it's not on Three Forty-one.
Oh, yeah, that would work. That would never work.
But I like Windsong, too. Which one's Windsong?
Okay, guys, and we'll call out there to, you know, firehouse subs here in a minute.
Okay.
Windsong.
Windsong.
Pine Needle.
What I have understood is that we have two choices here. Windsong Park and Pine Needle. So tomorrow evening at five o'clock, I would like you to be some prepared. So I got Windsong here and Windsong there. That's what I heard. And you're...
We're voting them all?
Yeah, we're going. Okay, so you guys want to add Oliver Park, is what I'm saying.
That's right.
So you have a choice of three. So as you lay there this evening...
That's so catchy, though.
Would you just, you know...
Sounds relaxing.
Would you guys have an epiphany that you can come back and let us know?
Oh, sure. We'll listen to them. We'll be ready.
Pine Needle, Oliver, or Wind... We at least went from seven to three. So tomorrow evening, as you think about this, we'll make a definitive decision about what our two parks are going to be named. Thank you for your cooperation. Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Any other comment that's relevant to that? Item four is Other Business and Supplemental Agenda. Item four is the Police Park Discussion About Modifications Relative to Peaches the Beaches Road Closure. Chief Leon.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
When we put this on the agenda, I thought we might have requested different road closures, but I think we worked something out where we don't have to, so this is probably the information that y'all can decide. So if you, on this map here, Gernigan Street, beside the courthouse with all these... This is the layout for Peaches Beaches, right in this area. Original layout, but it comes to pass that this is presidential primary time, when this is being held. There's a Saturday voting day, so you got to provide access. The handicap access is on this side of the courthouse. So, and the handicap parking places are right here and right here. But after meeting with Lions Club and Robbie Dunbar for the county and the election supervisor, instead of what we had talked about doing is moving this and then asking y'all to close that block, but we've worked it out where that can stay just like it is, and we will restrict access to Carol Street for people with courthouse business only. So if somebody comes in there and tries to park for the Peaches Beaches, we'll just tell them they have to go find another parking place, which means we'll have to staff it with somebody. But that gives them access to the handicap ramp. It also gives them access to the door that's on this walkway. And you might notice there are booths, vendors set up in there, but none of them will be on the walkways. So they will come up with something that doesn't cause us to close another road and have the hazard of people walking from this part across an active street to the other part. And so I don't think there's any action really required, unless y'all don't like that plan. And then, of course, you will close whatever street you use to say. But so the plan is, is we'll restrict access to Carol Street during the times that the polls are open to ensure that anybody coming to vote has a place to park and access to both the ADA entrance and the regular entrance, so to speak.
Chief, you say that you're going to close access. You're not going to close Carol Street.
Not going to...
You're just going to close the parking on Carol Street.
Right. We're not going to close the street at all. If somebody pulls up, we'll say, you're on courthouse business. If they say yes, then we let them park. If they say no, tell them, you know, go on through to the intersection and go straight left or right. But we're not going to close it at all. We'll just, we'll post somebody there to interact with the people that pour in. And we're going to put some signs up. The county's going to supply some signs about courthouse use only.
So the log trucks coming in Towson, they'll still be able to come up Fall, and they'll be able to come up May, and then turn on Ball?
Yes, sir. Yeah, Ball will be open all the way. That was another problem we're trying to close this part, was the ones coming down May. We're going to block off and have to actually probably ride up to Commerce and down Ball.
Yeah, there was a real concern, because Interfore is basically out of lumber, if you look at it. I mean, because of the weather conditions, they haven't been able to move lumber in there or the pine trees in there for their work. And so they feel like, over the next two weeks, they're going to have a heavy movement of timber into that plant. And so we were blocking off one of their major, or maybe two of their major peripères to get in there, so. And also, there is, there was a big concern that, if you've ever been to Peaches the Beaches, as you know, everybody loses their common sense, and they just go walking in the middle of streets and, you know, and that kind of stuff. Because they're so excited about being there. And we, they would be crossing an active street there on Ball Street, thinking that possibly it would be closed.
Which would have increased traffic, because we closed Park during.
Yes. So we're just, for the safety of our citizens, one of our major concerns, and also moving, you know, but keeping that route open for Interfore, so.
So that's my briefing. If y'all are good with that, we'll just proceed that way.
Questions? Concerns? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Item five is council member items. Mayor Proton?
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Fisher?
I think I've already asked you about some of the things, but... And I had mentioned in chat, I was asking about the status of the Inverness Project and the legacy water issues. They would not take any kind of action on that or make any kind of...
What are you talking about, Mr. Johnson?
Well, Mr. Johnson and several houses along there, and actually, Mr. Law as well.
No, we...
He's not contacted me, but I see the water coming out of the back.
No, we started that.
Yes, we've started that. We contacted our consulting engineer to go out there and, number one, recheck the stormwater plan from Legacy Park. Two, to get elevations done in the backyard and then do an assessment relative to the stormwater flow, but if something else needs to be done.
Correct. Because I noticed, particularly, Mr. Law's backyard is just, you know, flat all the way to the new subdivision, and then it comes up. Then the lot directly behind him is three or four feet elevated off his, you know, not four, but, you know, it's a significant elevation, so.
Mr. Law has had issues with stormwater way before any improvements were done out there.
Certainly hasn't helped. But like I said, he has not contacted me. I've just observed it, as I don't mind.
But just because he's had previous trouble, you still can't throw water over there?
No, no, no.
Any greater than nature was putting it on it before they started the construction. I thought I understand the law correctly.
I totally agree with you on that. But sometimes there's a tendency from the owners to come in and say they never had anything, it was dry as a Sahara until that subdivision ran in. And a lot of times, it's not quite correct.
Nature puts it there a lot, and it's a problem. And then he comes to us and, oh, that's a building problem.
That's right.
And he does not have a legal right to do that.
That's right. So that's what is being done. Okay.
Thank you.
You there, y'all?
Oh, yes, I did want to say this about the open house that we had. Excellent program, Tabitha did. Just did an outstanding job. I wanted to say that on Saturday prior to that, I went down into the Matt Arthur subdivision, knocked on several doors, and no one that I spoke to knew or knew a thing about it. Nobody knew a thing about it. My two cents is this: We need some signs. We need some signs. We can get the kind where you can take off. This was at Matt Arthur, and the next one's going to be somewhere else. But we've got to get it out there in those neighborhoods in front of those people that drive by. And even if it's just like a yard sign, it's put up at an intersection, people see that. Not everybody looks at the City of Perry website. Or maybe everybody doesn't subscribe to the House of Ninjas Journal, either at their home or online. They have it in there, but if you don't subscribe, then you don't see it. If you don't look at the other city outreach, you're just not going to hear it. And my proof positive was that they had not. And then we saw how many people we had. There, had it not been for the students, we'd have had about, what, fifteen folks.
We had some signs when we did walk with the mayor, did we not?
Yeah, with the one.
That's just not...
Well, my recommendation would be, we'll do a series of door knockers or flyers, but we need to have a timeframe in order to get that done. So if you're going to, because I think that's probably the most effective way, in their mailbox or whatever the case may be. Because they won't necessarily pick it up or see it on their utility bill, you know, and the signs. Maybe they'll see them, maybe they won't. We also have to be careful, because we don't allow pushing signs around the cities, and we don't want to have to deal with a city that's not abiding by its own regulations. So whenever we're going to have the next one, I would suggest that to get as much leeway time as we can, so we can get the flyers out to respective district and then see what happens.
It's just such a great program, you know, that you worked so hard on. We had wonderful information to share with people. It's disappointing there aren't any people from there.
Well, fifteen people was a lot. When we did it in District One, most of the people there were staff. It might have been seventy. And then, and then we put it everywhere we could put it. We weren't doing it like, I'm sure it went online, but we put it in our churches. It didn't make a difference.
We have done the flyers before. Mr. Mayor Proton King and myself went the week before on a number of evenings and actually put door hangers with all kinds of information from USDA and everything else on every house. We had a whole army of people out there going door to door. We ended up with like six or seven people that actually showed up. We've also have done that with our neighborhood cleanup and going, putting the hangers on every door or putting it... We don't put them in the mailbox, because they're not special. But we did put door hangers, and we got the same results. So we'll just have to keep trying. And, you know, the word will get out if we stay consistent with the program and we'll try other things the next time. People will tell their neighbors it was well worth it and going, so. And while we're talking about that, can I change the subject for you a little bit?
Exactly.
Mr. Gilmore had, was talking with me the other day. Would you consider having it on a Saturday afternoon or a Sunday afternoon? Because the same thing is true. And when you look at it, people are coming home. If they work at the base, they're probably getting home at six, if they're on that afternoon shift. They're picking up their children at their daycare. They're trying to get them... And so by six-thirty, they're just now feeding their family. And it probably has a, and they got homework to do. So the question becomes, would one of those days be a better... At two o'clock in the afternoon, after everybody's finished lunch, after everybody's finished church and all they've got to do, we might try one on a Saturday afternoon or a Sunday afternoon?
That would be definitely worth a try. I do. We need to try everything to increase the attendance at that. You know, when people don't have knowledge, then they complain.
Other thoughts about...
They have mileage, they still going to complain.
Other thoughts about either Saturday or Sunday afternoon? Would you be willing?
I don't want to see it on Sunday.
Okay, well, how about Saturday afternoon at like two o'clock?
Consider that.
I would say not on a Saturday during football season.
No, that question.
You're right.
Yeah. So...
If Georgia's playing, I know who'd win that.
Okay, well, we'll take it under advisement.
Hey, this is the right word.
Just putting it out there. Anything else? Dr. Albritton, do you have anything?
I just wanted to say, I walked Cherokee Gardens Park the other day, and it was, it'd just been cut, and it looked great. And it's going to be a nice place. You mentioned things were about to start to happen there. A week, two weeks, a month? I know it's hard to pin something down.
Well, actually, we're bringing an idea to you tomorrow to approve, to be putting decorative fencing along Country Club Road, along Network. And also, we've got, working on the bid. It should go up very shortly to put in the parking lot out there and new driveway. And I assume some signage will go in there as well when that happens, but I'm not going to push it, you know? So tomorrow, you'll be asked to take action to get it going very quickly.
The, I do think that the big barrels and the tape or whatever has helped with cars not driving back there from the pond.
And after this bid, they don't have to run over the fence to get in there.
I don't do that.
Jim, one question. What's the cable in that ditch between the Gentry's and the McClindles? He said there was a...
Now, they have a storm pipe in there.
I'm not talking about pipe. I'm talking about tape.
I'm not aware of the cable.
We need to check that out in the shoes.
I'll check it out.
Somebody will get electric duty in there.
It's probably one of the services. Maybe that's their internet cable coming to one house or the other. But I'm not aware. I'll check it out. I'm sure we have.
Thank you. That's what I couldn't remember.
I do want to echo Joyce's thanks to all city staff who worked so hard on the District Two Town Hall. I think the twenty or so constituents that were there did receive a lot of valuable information that was provided to us by all department heads in a great and efficient manner, which, you know, I really appreciate that.
manner, which I really appreciate that. And also, you know, my students know a little bit more about city government now, so all around to win, and looking forward to our next one, and never, never will we do it. And only, one quick question, Chad. Chad, I think I already know the answer to this, but we did get lights up at the entrance to Lake Forest, is that right?
They were not installed as of two weeks ago.
Okay.
Been following up the plan, I missed, the invoice came through to be processed.
Okay.
So we have the invoice, and they will not install them until that invoice is paid.
Okay.
I believe it was somewhere in the process, I don't know the current status on the invoice, but as soon as it's paid, they should be up.
Okay, so we should see them relatively soon? Cool. That's all I have here.
Mr. Spahnbluth?
I think I understand.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Nothing to nightmare.
You want to talk a little bit about the brochure that you put in there, so people know where it came from?
Sure, I can. Mayor Council, you have in your boxes a, I think it's three or four pages, basically PowerPoint slides on there. This is from an economist from Middle Georgia State University, who came and spoke to us at Rotary today, talking about economic trends that he sees from Middle Georgia, in particular, Houston County of Perry. It's actually pretty informative, certainly one of the better speakers we've had, is very engaging, but certainly with it, you know, being something that you all be interested in, I want to make sure that you all get a copy. If you have any follow-up or anything like that, I mean, contact myself, or obviously Ms. Harden, and we can get you all that information.
Thank you for providing that. It was very informative about Perry and also the county, so. Mr. Gilmore? How do you have for the city? Nothing? Department heads. Ms. Harden, welcome back.
Thank you.
What do you have for us today?
Yes, thanks, I have a couple things this evening. I first wanted to thank you all for being proactive for our business community. When I approached you guys in December, we were asking for a tree removal in front of Ball Street, because of visibility percentage, and the tree was too large, and you guys agreed to move forward with that, and from that, we do have a five-year lease with the Casterell Shop. This is their second location, they're currently making it in their 26 years. If you drive by Ball Street, you'll see where they've been, they painted the building and added sconces and made a beautiful facade. They'll be opening, a soft opening on March 7th, the Saturday, and they have a tentative renovation cutting scheduled with the Chamber at 4:00 PM on March 11th. So I encourage you all to come, and we're excited to have this business in Perry. The unit next to it, on the right-hand side, also has a five-year lease and a new tenant, and it's going to be an art gallery with antiques, and so that's very exciting, and we're thrilled to see all the new activity happening in Perry and our downtown. I also wanted to inform you guys that we had another company that qualified for the Rural Zone Tax Credit Program. So for 2019, we have five companies and more than $300,000 captured for the Rural Zone Tax Credits, and it did take some education and handling to get them to utilize the tax credits, so we're excited about that. But even better is that because we're such a tall-tiered community utilizing the Rural Zone Program in the state, that the state DCA staff is actually now referring attorneys and people in the state to us, to talk to us about how we utilize that program and what types of businesses we're able to utilize the tax credits, whether it was just job creation for two jobs, or the large investment rehabilitation and job creation. So I had a call from an attorney this afternoon, working on a project in another community, and he said, the state DCA Rural Zone person said, talked to Ashley at the City of Perry, because the state's really looking at us as a lead on the Rural Zone Program that's really utilizing it, so I just wanted to share that with you all.
Thank you. Sounds great. Mr. Wood? Any more tree stories?
I'm not necessary.
Anything else this evening? Mr. Swan?
Yes, sir. Mayor Council? Just giving an update on our disc-off course, we'll be installing the new targets this Friday at the former Cherokee Pine, I'm kidding. They'll be installed Friday. Hopefully, the weather will hold up, you know, we might have snow by Friday or 75 degrees on this hill, so. Really proud of our 10-and-under youth basketball team, they went up, oh, we hosted district tournament this weekend at Perry Middle School, and we have qualified for the state tournament, so we have some 10-and-unders that are going to experience March Madness. So we're excited, the tournament will be in Riverdale, Georgia.
Okay.
This Saturday, Friday and Saturday. Oh, and we did have a discussion about our town hall meetings, open house meetings, I spoke with Ms. Tabitha once before, and Mr. Gilmore our last meeting. I think that Legion Service could lend their, lend a hand, especially if we do it on a Saturday morning or Saturday afternoon. We talked about pop-up recreation, and I talked with the mayor as well, pop-up recreation, we can go in and promote a fun day, get the kids out, get the families out, hand out information, possibly the week before, and just promote, or the same day, since we're thinking about moving it to Saturday. So the day of the open house, town hall, we could be out there entertaining kids, so mom and dad can enjoy it. So I'll write that check, and, you know, we'll cash it later, so. And I think that's it. Oh, and I did see a flock of beautiful swans at Cherokee Pine.
How many were there?
About five, I mean, five.
Chief Lynn, you want to try to follow that up?
I do not, sir. And I really, I don't have anything else to say.
Mr. Worthington?
I can't touch it either.
Ms. Clark?
It's not going to be as entertaining, but Mayor Council, speaking of the open house, which is a very popular subject tonight, I am in communication with my colleagues throughout the United States, with the local government communicators, because obviously, attendance at town hall meetings is a widespread issue that a lot of us face, so we have got a very good dialogue going on about new ways to do community outreach and to reach those people to help bring them in. So that is in the works, so hopefully, the next one that will come around will have a little bit better attendance results, as far as that goes.
Thank you. Mr. McMurray, anything else?
Nothing further.
No other water stories tonight, no?
Not yet.
Chief Parker?
Just a reminder to cover your cough, and make sure you wash your hands frequently, and you could call it Corona Park.
Probably will be some Corona drank.
She's writing, she's writing all this down.
That was Chad.
Can I actually add to that, Mayor? With all the talk about the coronavirus and flu and all this type of thing, our custodial staff has placed a renewed emphasis on making sure that things are sanitary at our facilities, lots of Lysol, lots of Lysol wipes, that type of stuff, and I believe we purchased six new hand sanitizing stations to be installed throughout our facilities, primarily the entrances and exits and that type of thing, so you hear about it tomorrow. I mean, it may be, you know, a little early or whatever, but we thought we'd try and do what we could to promote safety and sanitation.
Still, that's great. Normal flu season going on too, so thank you for staying ahead of those tight things.
It's got to go until May, flu season is not over till May.
Mr. Hester, anything else?
Absolutely nothing, sir. Thank you.
I think that's everybody we've got here this evening, so. Mrs. Warren? I didn't know anything from the city clerk's office.
No, sir.
Anything, Ms. Howard? Thank you. If there's nothing else to come before us this evening, then we will stand adjourned until tomorrow afternoon at five o'clock, for the pre-council upstairs. All of our meetings are open to the public.
And we pray.
Yeah, always do. Participate. Thank you. Six o'clock, at this time, I will hold the regular meeting of the Perry City Council for Tuesday, March the 3rd, 2022 quarter, please. We have a forum. If you're able, at this time, would you please stand for our indication of pledge of allegiance? Our indication will be given by Councilmember Jones, and will be led in the pledge of allegiance by Mayor Pro Tem King.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening, we thank you for those gathered here tonight, and we ask that you fill this place with your Holy Spirit, fill our hearts with your Holy Spirit, that we might lead, guide, and direct the city of Perry in the way that best glorifies your name, in the name of Jesus, that we pray. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to your flag, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which you stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item four on our agenda this evening is appointments. Four A is the Perry Area Convention and Investors Bureau has recommended the appointment of the following members of their board. Mayor Pro Tem King, representative will be Ms. Linda Stanley. Councilmember Joy Petersons will be Ms. Michelle Lacy. Councilmember Riley Hunt would be Mr. Mike Baker. There are two appointments from the mayor and the council, Mr. J.J. Kirk and Mrs. Heather Killen. Is there any, is there any comments from the CDB relative to this?
No, sir.
No comments? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve these nominations as submitted.
Motion is second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. The appointment is approved unanimously. Item four B is Environmental Advisory Board for Robbins Air Force Base. As we discussed earlier this evening, Robbins Air Force Base has a civilian review panel of environmental work that's being done at the base. We have, Henrose Wolfe has been our representative on that group for the last six years, and has submitted his resignation. We have a recommendation of Ms. Kimberly Walsh. Ms. Walsh has gone through our, many of our training courses here in Perry, I think she went through your Perry, I think that's the correct group, she has indicated that she would like to serve in other capacities. She is a engineer at the Robbins Air Force Base, and we would like to nominate her to serve on this Environmental Advisory Board. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve her on this appointment.
So, second.
All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Appointment is approved unanimously, thank you. Item five is Community Partner Updates. Item five A is a Community Partner Update from the Perry Area Historical Society. This is Loudmills.
I'm going to get comfortable. And now I'm not short on words. Mayor Walker and members of council and everybody else that's in the room too. On March the 1st of 2010, we opened the doors of the Perry Area Historical Museum, and we announced to the world that we were housing a historical repository of the history of Houston County. It became our mission to hold artifacts in trust for society and to safeguard diverse memories for future generations. Now, we have completed 10 years of service to our community, and I would like to present you with a summary of some of the accomplishments that have been made during that 10 years. But first, let me say thank you for the support that you have given to our organization. At the beginning, we had so many questions about operating a business in Perry, and you helped us to find the answers. You were patient while we learned how to be ambassadors for the city, and you offered opportunities for us to benefit the community, and we thank you for that. And then the journey began. We threw open the doors, declared that we had a local history museum in Perry. Visitors began to come, and memorabilia was donated. Since that day, we have hosted visitors from 44 states and 14 foreign countries, and they continue to come. But we have yet to see visitors from Connecticut, Louisiana, Maine, Nevada, Rhode Island, and West Virginia. So if you have relatives in any of those places, go ahead and invite them to come on down and see the museum, and we can close our books on those, we can say, 50 states. We're a nonprofit organization, and we're stacked entirely by 31 volunteers who keep the museum open three days a week. And all over the 10 years, we've averaged 500 visitors each year to the museum, and many others have attended our programs, tours, and presentations. We guarantee equal heritage access to all, and promote what was, what is, and what is to come. We have collected, preserved, researched, interpreted, and exhibited history. We have added dimensions to our business to include educational events and genealogical research. We publish books so that the history would be archived accurately, and we gave presentations and hosted events such as New Armies to enrich the presentation of history. We have given tours and fashion shows to make our history interactive, and we tell stories to make that history personal. We market ourselves through published materials, presentations, Facebook, and the web. Our resources now include the history of churches, cemeteries, and archive information on topics such as businesses, homes, industry, transportation, and organizations. We have amassed biographical information on 435 families, and we have collected data on 15 communities of Houston County. Mr. Lettner, 168 communities in Houston County, we've got a long ways to go. Some of our resources are very unique and belong only to us. One such example includes personal items and the private diary of General Courtney Hodges, commander of the First Army of World War II. Other examples would be the family bible of the granddaughter Frances Marion, the swamp fox of the American Revolution, and a traffic frog from the Dixie Highway. Other items of interest in our archives includes some Sam Leonard memorabilia, and Andrew Jackson Presidential Campaign Button of 1829, a metal coin bank collection from the late 1800s, Civil War, World War I, World War II, and Korean War memorabilia, which includes much research data of the veterans for each of these wars. Social history memorabilia, which includes clothing and jewelry, some well over 100 years old. We have General Courtney Hodges West Point uniform from 1905. We have the crown sevtrum clothing worn by Kelly Gerald's in 1987, when she was crowned Miss Georgia. We have an amber tie of one of the first graduates of the Women's Female College in Perry, Georgia in 1854. I could enumerate many more items of interest for our visitors, but for the sake of time, I will move on and talk about preservation. We have sponsored the preservation of the last one-room schoolhouse in Houston County, the Tallison Tree, which we promote as Perry's first welcome center, and the Sinclair Station, a 1930's architectural design built along the Dixie Highway. We build a strong network of communication with the counties surrounding us to share this historical information. Some of the examples of networking include helping Jones County locate a grave in Evergreen Cemetery, helping Pulaski County locate a house that was moved into Houston County, helping Peach County define its history around areas like Myrtle and Berth. Can't remember where those are. Helping Macon County with church and cemetery information. Let me close by inviting all of you to our birthday party on May the 17th to celebrate 10 years of business. This birthday party requires no gifts. Come and enjoy the Coca-Colas or moon pies, and moon pies or whatever we choose to serve and celebrate with us. You know, any business that can stay open for 10 years these days is certainly worth celebrating. I know this has been a lengthy presentation, but I wanted you to know that we have been very busy over the past 10 years promoting our precious community, and we plan to continue being your ambassadors for many years yet to come. Thank you for allowing me to share on behalf of the Perry Area Historical Society. and celebrate with us. You know, any business that can stay open for ten years these days is certainly worth celebrating. I know this has been a lengthy presentation, but I wanted you to know that we have been very busy over the past ten years promoting our precious community and we plan to continue being your ambassadors for many years yet to come. Thank you for allowing me to share on behalf of the Perry Area Historical Society. I think we make a great partnership.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing this up to date. You guys are a great partnership. Is there any other community partners here this evening that would like to update mayor and council at this time? Yes, would you stand and give us your name and your organization?
Hey, I'm Allison Gamsley. I'm the president, CEO of the Perry Area Convention and Visitors Bureau. And so just had a couple of quick things I wanted to bring to y'all. I brought a stack of the newly released Explore Georgia Twenty Twenty Travel Guide that is put on by the state. We have a lovely ad in the back of it. I'll leave a stack of it on each side of the rooms so y'all can grab one on your way out. Also, just wanted to update on a couple of things that we're working on. We just got that from the Georgia CBB meeting, which, the winter show meeting, which was last, beginning of last week. And then over the weekend, we attended, it's the first travel show that we've attended as a trade show, as a marketer, and it was the Travel and Adventure Show. It was in Atlanta at the Cobb Galeries, the first one in Atlanta as the city has hosted this event. We had thousands of people coming by our table. It was a great success. We had a lot of people that if they had heard of Perry, they said they drove through it a lot to go to Florida and noticed the signs and that kind of thing. So we were able to market International Festival, the Food Truck Fridays, all our events going on, as well as just the everyday downtown things we have going on in Perry and out at the Ag Center. And so we had a lot of positive feedback. A lot of people were like, oh, next time I'll make sure to make a stop on my travels and make sure I plan to stop by and see what's going on. So we were really happy about that. And speaking of International Festival, we are running an ad campaign through WALB so it'll hit more of like the South Georgia market area over to Columbus. We think that's a really prime market that really hasn't been hit. It's good, it's short enough trip for day trips, but it's also far enough away that people want to come and stay the night. So we are starting the ad campaign for that, starts on Monday and it's two weeks leading up to the International Festival. And it'll run multiple times every day for those next two weeks during the morning, prime daytime shows, the morning news, as well as the five and six o'clock news. So we're excited about that. We think we'll get a lot of good feedback from that. We have a lot of people really excited about the International Festival. So Anya, you've done a fantastic job with that.
I said two weeks.
No, I'm about to run out of the room. And I think that's it. Just wanted to let y'all know what we have to go on.
Any questions or comments? Absolutely. Thank you for the effort and thank you for taking the time and coming and presenting this.
Good, thank you.
Is there any other community partners that would like to address council at this time? Item six on our agenda is citizens with input. Are there any citizens here this evening that would like to address mayor and council at this time? Jessica, would you stand and give us your name and address please?
My name is Eric Schultz and my address, I'm actually in Warren Robbins, two oh two Hill Drive, Warren Robbins, Georgia. But the reason I'm here is because we purchased the seven forty and seven forty-two Main Street on Perry, Georgia, and we are going to be opening up a wood fire pizzeria and bar in Perry in the old seven forty there. And also we are working on purchasing and hope to have it close soon and purchasing the soda shop, the couple jerk soda shop, and big plans to amp up the theme of that and open more as well for lunch and everything as well. So excited to be bringing business and restaurants to Perry and be part of this growing community. So my wife, Florin, and my daughter, Jordan, here, so looking forward to it.
Well, congratulations, that's outstanding. We're delighted to have new business partners joining us in Perry and I know you will be highly successful. Our town is growing very, very rapidly and we look forward to working with you. Any questions or comments?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. Is there any other citizens here at this time that would like to address mayor or Thank you. Item seven is a public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide any interested parties with an opportunity to express their views and concerns in accordance with OCGA thirty-six dash sixty-six dash four. Our public hearings are conducted as outlined here in the following manner. Those sheets are available for you if you want to read those, but that will be the guidelines that we will operate under tonight. This public hearing is now open. Seven A is RZNE dash six dash twenty twenty and the applicant is the city of Perry and requesting a text amendment regarding conservation subdivision development requirements. Mr. Wood.
Thank you, mayor, mayor and council. This is a text amendment to the land management ordinance. It deals with conservation subdivisions. As we have mentioned to you before, we have noticed an issue with parking in, in the streets and neighborhoods and we put together a task force to look at how to best address that issue. During our collection of data, we determined that the areas where this issue was most prominent was in conservation subdivisions. And also, some of that, we felt, the task force felt, was due to some of the regulations that were allowed in those conservation subdivisions. So based on the collection of data and the task force's recommendation, we have proposed an amendment to increase the minimum roadway width in conservation subdivisions from forty feet to fifty feet and also to increase the minimum front setback for buildings in conservation subdivisions from twenty feet to twenty-five feet. And that will add an additional ten feet on each side of the street, which will lengthen the driveways to those properties to a minimum of thirty-eight and a half feet, which should provide additional space for cars to park in the driveway. One additional modification is Scrivener's Error that is Newby caught when this was originally transferred from our old land, Perry Land Development Ordinance. One of the references to another section of the ordinance was incorrect, so we corrected that as well. But those are the two provisions, the width of the roadway and the additional setback. That, as I mentioned, is the recommendation from the task force. The planning commission also recommended approval of that, of those modifications as well.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Councilmembers, what questions do you have from Mr. Wood relative to this request for the text amendment? Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for this text amendment? Thank you. Is there anyone here that would wish to speak in opposition of this text amendment? Thank you. This public hearing is now closed. Item eight is review of the minutes. Eight A, councilmembers, you have been provided the minutes for the February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, pre-council meeting and the February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty council meeting. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept these minutes as written.
Motion second.
The motion is second. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to this, the minutes as presented? Hearing none. All in favor, would you please indicate by raising your right hand? Please let the record show that the minutes were approved unanimously.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Mrs. Bynum-Grace abstains because she was absent that day. Thank you, Mrs. Bynum-Grace. Item nine is old business. Nine A is old business from the mayor. I do not have any. Any old, old business from councilmembers, Ms. Bynum-Grace? Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. King?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Is there any old business from the city attorney, Ms. Newby?
Yes, sir.
Any old business from the city manager, Mr. Gilmore?
No, sir.
Any old business from the assistant city manager, Mr. Robert Smith?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item ten is new business. Ten A are matters referred from March the second, two thousand and twenty work session in the March third, two thousand and twenty three council meeting. Ten A one is a resolution on the naming of a park. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, mayor. Mayor and council, members of the public. At the council's work session yesterday, it was discussed about doing two things relative to city parks. The first is to consider a renaming of Heritage Park, which is located on three forty-one on the west side of I seventy-five. And the second is to give a name to the recently purchased passive park, formerly the Perry Country Club Golf Course. In that discussion, there were a number of names discussed with council and the purpose of this resolution is to proceed with the official changing of the name if council so desires and the naming of a park if they are ready to vote.
Now, are you going to give the names or it should be in the motion?
I would think under the particular circumstances, it'd be wise for the mayor to indicate his understanding of the name. And then council can make a motion to determine whether it was to proceed or not, assuming council agrees.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. I appreciate that. There has been a great deal of discussion about naming of our parks and I'm glad that the councilmembers paid such great interest in doing that. I don't know if everyone knows the history of Heritage Park, but we had to do some rearranging of the amphitheater there to preserve long-life oaks. There, there are five oaks in there that I understand, could be more, but my understanding is five. And they moved the amphitheater to preserve those two-hundred-year-old oaks. So we felt like it was appropriate to rename Heritage Park and the recommendation on Heritage Park is Heritage Oaks Park is the recommendation, using the old name that was there plus incorporating that. So is that correct, councilmember?
Yes, sir.
So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the naming of Heritage Park to Heritage Oaks Park.
Motion second.
The motion is second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Please let the record show that the motion was, I mean, the recommendation was approved Number two is Cherokee Pines Country Club. As you know, we bought sixty acres out there and it has been called the new park for the last six months or so. So there's been a lot of discussion around the naming of that. There were several names listed for the park. Some of those were Oliver Park, some of them were Center Park or Central Park and a number of other ones. And so there was a lively discussion at our pre-council meeting relative to the name. So it is my understanding that the majority of the council would prefer Pine Needle Park for that park, named after the pine trees and pine needles that are in that location. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to accept the name as Pine Needle Park for our new park at Cherokee Pines Country Club.
So move.
Motion is, I need to say.
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Please let the record show that four approvals and two, all those opposed. Please let the record show that Ms. Peterson and Ms. Bynum-Grace are imposed to the name. The name is approved as Pine Needle Park with a four to vote. Glad we got that one out. Oh, well, it could have been Wimsong Park, that was the other name that the voting was on and we had, it came down that the mayor had to break the tie, so. But the, the name of the park will be Pine Needle Park and I'm glad they have a name for it. Because everybody keeps asking, what is the name of that new park? And I said, new park is the name of it. All right. Ten B, ordinances for the first reading and introduction. Ten B one, first reading of a text amendment regarding conservation subdivisions, development requirements. Mr. Wood, any additional comments?
I don't know. I'm already finished.
Yes. Okay. This is the first reading of this, so there's no action required by the council. Item ten B two is the first reading of a Red Speed ordinance. Ms. Newby?
Yes, sir. Thank you, mayor. Mayor and council, you may recall in close, end of September, the end of last year, there was a presentation made by Chief Lynn regarding the creation of an automated traffic enforcement safety system within our school zones as allowed under OCGA forty dash fourteen dash eighteen, which came into effect in July of two thousand and eighteen. At that time, council had reached consensus to proceed with that process and we have contracted with Red Speed as the company to come in and install the cameras and move forward with creating this automated traffic safety, or traffic enforcement safety system within the school zone. And that's what this ordinance would do, would amend the code to provide for that safety system within the school zones to provide for a civil fine to be assessed one hour before, the hours during, and one hour after if anyone goes through a school zone at an excess of ten miles or greater above the posted speed limit. This is also a first reading, so there's nothing for me to do at this time, but if you have any answering questions you have about the ordinance.
Councilmembers, any questions relative to the Red Speed ordinance? Thank you. As stated, this is the first reading of this ordinance that will appear on our next council meeting for a vote. There's no action required tonight. Item ten C are resolutions for introduction and adoption. Ten C one is a resolution to submit an application to the Department of Community Affairs for the two thousand and twenty development block grant. Mr. Wood?
Yes, mayor. We are requesting your approval to authorize the submission of this application for a seven hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar community development block grant for a portion of the Creekwood neighborhood that's shown on the screen here. It includes a portion of Creekwood Drive, properties on Winchester Circle and on King Boulevard. The city would, as proposed, would include a ten thousand dollar match and would also include four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars in fee modifications for those thirteen comments that are included and we recommend for your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. If councilmembers, any questions to Mr. Wood relative to this application to the Department of Community Affairs? Hearing none. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution as presented.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion is second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Please let the record show the resolution was approved unanimously. Item ten D are awards for bids. Ten D one is bid number twenty twenty dash twenty-nine and this is for a city park fence installation at Pine Needle Park. Mr. Wood?
Thank you, mayor. As you said, this is for the installation of a decorative fence at the newly named Pine Needle Park. It will be, the fence should be, will be installed on the south end of the park. The road that you see here is a country club road. The, it'll be a four-foot decorative aluminum fence that's painted black. Next slide. Here's just an example of what the fence will look like. That's not the exact model, but it looks very similar. Next slide, please. to $41,028.39. This purchase will be funded through the SPOSS 2018 Fund, and it's staff's recommendation that we would award this to TNT Fencing Company, Inc., in the amount of $25,913, who was the lowest responsive bidder.
Council members, any questions relative to the new fence? Thank you, Mr. Worthington. If there's no questions, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the low bid from TNT Fencing Company Incorporated.
Ooh.
Second. Motion and second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Please let the record show the bid was accepted unanimously. 10D2 is bid number 2020-31, and this is for a knuckle boom loader. Mr. Worthington?
Thank you again, Mayor and council. This solicitation was for the purchase of a knuckle boom loader. As you see in the picture, this is used by our solid waste crews to pick up yard waste. This purchase will be funded through the solid waste fund. We received five responsive bids ranging from $149,560 to $156,363. It'd be staff's recommendation that we would award this to the lowest responsive bidder, who was Middle Georgia Freightliner, in the amount of $149,560.
Thank you, Mr. Worthington. What questions do you have relative to this bid for the knuckle boom motor? Yes, sir. That does include the truck, right?
That's everything that you see in that picture, yes, the truck, the bed, and the boom.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Any other questions? Hearing none. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the bid from Middle Georgia Freightliners for the knuckle boom loader at $149,560.
Ooh.
Motion and second. If there's a motion and second, all in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Please let the record show the bid was accepted unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Worthington. Item 10E is the selection of a voting delegate for the GMA Annual Meeting, Annual Membership Business Meeting on June 29th of 2020. Council members, as you know, we have to have a voting member at that meeting, at their business meeting, as being members of the GMA. And at this time, I will entertain a motion, or yes, I'll entertain a motion for the delegate as well as an alternate for that delegate.
Mayor, I would nominate you, our mayor, to be the voting delegate, and Mayor Pro Tim King to be the alternate.
Sir. If there's a motion, there's a second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Mr. King?
I just want to know if you weren't going to accept.
Please let the record show that the motion was approved unanimously. Thank you. Item 10F are special events applications. 10F1 is the Perry Area Chamber of Commerce is hosting the 32nd Annual Dogwood Festival on April 18th and 19th of 2020 in downtown Perry. Mrs. Palmer?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, you pretty much just said everything. But I'm Ellen Palmer of the Perry Chamber, and here to present you the application for the 32nd Annual Dogwood Festival. It will be downtown as in the past on April 18th and April 19th. This is a map kind of outlining that, the layout of that. Nothing new as far as the layout, similar as in the past, same streets, same time, so not too much there. We have added a couple of zones, so we are going to have a little bit bigger pit zone, which we call Play Park. And then our adult zone is going to be Hops and Chops. So that was one addition that we have not had in the past, so we have gone through the proper application to have alcohol vendors there selling alcohol for that zone. And then other than that, we're just excited, adding these new things to Dogwood, great to provide another community event for residents and visitors, so just excited for another Dogwood Festival.
Thank you. What questions do you have relative to the Dogwood Festival, Ms. Palmer? Hearing none. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the application from the Perry Area Chamber of Commerce for the 32nd Annual Dogwood Festival.
Ooh.
Second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Please let the record note the special event for the Dogwood Festival was approved unanimously. 10F2 is the City of Perry Main Street Program is hosting its 8th Annual Downtown Merchants' Progressive Wine Tasting Event in downtown Perry on May 2nd, 2020. Mrs. Turpin?
Thank you, Mayor and council. As I addressed in the pre-council session, Ms. Bryant is at a training tonight, so I will be presenting this on her behalf. This is the 8th Annual Downtown Merchants' Progressive Wine Tasting Event, and whoops, way too fast here. Is there? There we go. This is the map which Ms. Bryant provided for me for the event. It's my understanding that the last seven years is very similar to what they will be having for this event. The primary change will be that they are incorporating a dueling pianos on the lawn, and that will be a fence-off area that will be ticketed, but the event itself will still be open to the public, so people will have the option to come and shop downtown and just enjoy the ambience of it at no charge, or they can purchase a ticket for the wine tasting and the dueling pianos. So it's more inclusive to people whether they just want to come and shop and enjoy the ambience of downtown, or if they would like to participate in the extra features. To my knowledge, right now, there are 25 different wine stops, and it is noted that there will be probably more coming onboard between now and then March. Ms. Bryant also asked that I share with you all that the ticket sales from the wine tasting and dueling pianos will be invested back into downtown development beautification projects, such as promotions and the facade grant program, now that the Merchants Council falls under the leadership of the Main Street Program. So what we are requesting tonight from the City of Perry is a special events application fee waiver, continued support from the Public Works Department for event setup, sanitation support during the event in regards to extra trash receptacles, and then approval of the requested road closures, which would be Carroll between Maine and Washington, Ball between Commerce and Maine, and Jurnikin between Commerce and Maine.
And, Mrs. Turpin, what questions do you have relative to the 8th Annual Downtown Merchants' Wine Tasting Event?
Just the ticket for the wine tasting include the dueling pianos, or is that a separate?
Yes, ma'am. It's my understanding that it does, and it's my understanding that there will also be an option for pre-sales, which will be at a reduced rate, and then day of events or day of purchases as well. And I don't know if it was an application, but it's my understanding that the ticket will also come with a reusable wine glass that the attendees can wear to get their samples, so kind of a token of memorabilia from the event.
Any other question relative to this event? Hearing none. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the proposal for the 8th Annual Downtown Merchants' Progressive Wine Tasting as presented.
Ooh.
Second. If there's a motion and a second, all in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Please let the record show that the wine tasting event was approved unanimously. Item 10F3 is the City of Perry Government is hosting Food Truck Friday event series, April 3rd, May 8th, June 12th, June 10th, August 14th, and September 11th, from 6:00 PM until 10:00 PM in downtown Perry. Mrs. Turpin?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I figured I'd come up here and knock this all out in one series, so you don't get tired of me talking about Food Truck Friday. We will be continuing, or going into our third season of Food Truck Friday, and it's going to be very similar to last year's setup in regards to the map, the road closures, the time for road closures, as well as the volume of the food trucks that we will have. The primary change to the 2020 season is that we are going to have a theme for each night. So in front of you, you have a flyer, but also on the screen here, you can see that we will be kicking off the event with Perry Proud Night in April. And the reason for choosing that theme is to help to promote the Dogwood Festival, and then also to promote our Main Street Program, to promote our downtown businesses. We will have a local band performing at night, so we really want to kick off the season being very Perry Proud. In May, we invite you all to come out for 80s all night. We have an 80s cover band that will be performing, and we have encouraged our vendors to get involved with dressing up in 80s attire, and we would welcome all of you to as well. In June, we'll be moving into an evening of jazz, where we have a jazz performer coming, or jazz ensemble from Macon. And then in July, we're encouraging people to promote their team spirit, whether from local little leagues up to the professional sports areas. I'm not a sports person, so forgive me for my poor terminology. And then in August, we will have Aloha Friday night, where we will encourage people to put umbrellas in their drinks and have a little bit of aloha spirit. And then we will end the season on Friday, September 11th, with our National Heroes Night, where we will go all out for our first responders in military, including a bagpipe ceremony and a band that is made up of veterans and active duty members. So in regards to the actual event itself, this is the proposed map. It's very similar to what I used last year. As you can see, there's 30 spots for food trucks and a couple of spots for beverage vendors. We will continue with the kids' zone, and we will continue with the secondary seating area on Carroll Street, as the merchants responded really well to that. Planet Fitness has shared they will return as a sponsor, and of course, we're opening opportunities for other sponsors if they are interested. And then once again, the CBB will be with us to help with meeting attendees and answering any questions that they might have about visiting Perry. So what we're requesting tonight is approval of the event to be hosted in downtown historic Perry, continued support from all departments, including Fire Department, Police Department, and Public Works. The road closures, Jurnikin Street between Commerce and Maine, Ball Street between Commerce and Maine, and Carroll Street between Washington and Marion, from 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM for each event.
Thank you. Any questions relative to our food truck series? Looks like it's going to be an outstanding series this summer. I do have one question.
Yes.
On Friday, the 14th of August, will you be serving chichis at the Aloha, Hawaii Bar?
Chichi?
Oh, yeah, they serve them at the Rainbow Tower in downtown Hawaii.
You're testing my 19 years in Hawaii. I have no, I know the conversation.
Just want to know.
I'm thinking shi-shi, which means a completely different thing.
No, no, no. This is a coconut drink, I'm just curious.
Okay. I will look into it specifically for you.
Is there any questions relative to our food truck event? Hearing none. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept this presentation as presented.
Ooh.
Second. If there's a motion and a second, all in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Please let the record show that the request was approved unanimously. Item 10G4 is the City of Perry Government is hosting the Dogwood Derby on April 18th, 2020, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
All right. So on your mark, it's like, oh, it's almost time for the City of Perry's 2nd Annual Derby. I hesitate to call it the 2nd Annual Dogwood Derby, because this is an evolution of last year's Soapbox Derby event, which we held in May, and as many of you may remember, it was really, really hot, and we were desperate for shade, so we are looking at moving it early into the year and combining it with the Dogwood Festival. This event is free to participate and free to watch, and we are hoping that we'll have great success with this, because we are already seeing more participants sign up so far this year than we did in our previous year, and also moving it closer to the Magnolia Race in Macon. We're hoping that people will come to our event for a rematch, their cars will still be in the front of their garage, or possibly on their trailers, so they'll be more likely to come down the following week and race with us in Perry. This event will be hosted on Saturday, April 18th, and it will run from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And what we are requesting tonight is approval of the event to be hosted on public property on Washington Street and at City Hall. We are working with the Sun Beauty Supply, as well as the church up the street, to make sure that we can cooperate with them as we did last year, and any ways that we can improve from last year's event to this year. So we'll have the upper staging area up at the top of Washington Street, and then we will have our headquarters again at City Hall. The racers will come down Washington Street, which will be closed from the top, forgive me, I forget, I think it's WF Rain and Drive, all the way down to our Perry Public Safety Building, so that we have ample space for not only the racers, but also any observers. And then also, Ball Street will stay open for traffic, as this will be the same time as the Dogwood Festival. What we are requesting tonight, in addition to the road closures, is continued support from Fire Department, the Police Department, and Public Works to assist with setup for this event, and general cleanup and support throughout the event.
Thank you, Mrs. Turpin. What questions do you have, council members, relative to the Dogwood Derby? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion at this time to accept this event as presented.
Ooh.
Second. If there's a motion and a second, all in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Please let the record show the event was approved unanimously. Thank you, Mrs. Turpin. Sounds like we're planning a fun summer in Perry, Georgia.
Absolutely.
So thank you for all your hard work, and all the hard work of the staff that makes all this happen.
Thank you.
Couldn't do it without all of you. Item 11 or council member items, Ms. Bynum Grace?
I have nothing.
Mr. King?
I have one item, Mayor. I would just like to say, you know, tonight was one of those nights where council did not all vote the same way on certain issues. And we don't always agree on everything, but I think it's so important to point out tonight that when this group has disagreements, there remain just that, disagreements. And those disagreements are civil, and they're respectful, and they're considered of one another. And while we may not always vote together on every issue, that doesn't mean that this group is not still together on behalf of the City of Perry. And I just want to say tonight that that truly makes me proud to serve with all the people that I meet here, especially those. I thought that was really worth pointing out tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
I'll second.
Mr. Hunt?
I agree with that.
I agree with that. It went song. I'm going to get over it, buddy.
We got other parks coming. Mayor, right there?
Oh, good.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Nothing, no, sir.
Ms. Newby?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gilmore, anything additional?
I have nothing, ma'am.
Item 12, is the department of items. Ms. Warren, anything from the city clerk's office?
Nothing, I see, no, sir.
Ms. King?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Wood, anything additional tonight?
Yes, I'd like to make one comment. We are coming up in, on 2020 census in about a week and a half. You should all be seeing an invitation in your mail to participate in the census, and we hope that you would do that early, so, because the longer you wait, the more invitations you're going to get. And if you wait too long, then you're going to get someone knocking on your door, and when someone starts knocking on your door, that means the cost of the census is going up. So it's very important to you, to us, because it affects our representation in Washington, at the state level and at the local level. It also deals with how about 675 billion dollars gets distributed around the country. So it's important for you to fill out those census forms and get those back as soon as possible. So again, it should be coming in sometime mid-March, and April 1st is census date.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Smith, anything from Public Works?
No, sir.
Ms. Clark, anything from our communications?
No, sir, nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight? I think I got everybody there. Ms. Harden?
Yes, Mayor and council. Just as a reminder, I informed you last night, but the general public as well, that the casserole shop is opening at second location on Ball Street. This Saturday, March 7th, will be their soft opening, and they have a tentative ribbon cutting on March 11th at 4:00 PM with the chamber. And I just wanted to thank you all again for being proactive for our business community, when the property owner and the tenant, the future tenant at the time, set their lease with contingent on the tree removal, now that the tree's gone, the building has been painted, it looks beautiful, and they did sign a five-year lease. So speaking of new businesses, we also have a new neighbor to announce for the casserole shop. Currently, there's a church and a retail location at the corner of Commerce and Ball Street. They will not be renewing their lease with the property owner. So a high-end commercial photographer that does business shots, senior portraits, that type of thing, has engaged with two other photographers that offer family portraits and real estate photography as well, and they'll be opening Ball Street Photography at the corner of Ball Street and Commerce, where the Lotus Group is currently. They have a lease signed, and they'll be providing a whole scope of high-end commercial photography services for Perry residents and people that need that, with families. So I'm just super excited to announce that to you all. They do business professional headshots, and they say they love to, Dustin Cole said he loved to photograph Mayor and council for new headshots as well. June 1st is their opening date, and we're just super excited about all the business interest in our downtown and just throughout Perry.
Thank you. Mrs. Turpin?
Hi. Thank you, Mayor and council. Just want to remind you all, as Just want to remind you all, as Ms. Hamley alluded to, the International Festival is creeping up on us. Just some updates, we have distributed more than 1,500 copies of the International Festival program. If you all need any more to give to friends or families, please let me know. We also have started billboard marketing, and then radio marketing, and also we will be marketing on the news as well. So there's lots of different avenues that we can use to reach people. That's coming up quick, and then of course, the whole season starts right after that, so I'll have plenty more updates for you all. You'll be seeing a lot of me soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Warren?
No, sir.
Lee Parkes?
Chief Lamb?
Looks like she's not.
Chief Parker?
No, sir.
Mr. Worthington, anything additional?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. I think they have everybody, if not? Thank you. Item 13 are general public items. Is there anyone here proceeding that would like to address Mayor and Council at this time? Mrs. Ismael, Ms. Lautner?
In 1821, Austin County was formed. 1824, it became the City of Perry. I just want to know if council is making any plans to observe that 200...
We are in discussions at this time. We are, because of your help, we are aware that that's something on it, and I know that it is. I understand, are you working with the county at this time for some type of event?
No.
Not yet?
Nothing has been... I have talked with all three mayors, and everybody's interested, but there has been no committee of ideas. Lots of people are interested in helping, but somebody has to take the leadership, and at this point, there isn't leadership.
We've talked about it here in the staff, and so we're keenly aware of it, so we'll push that forward a little bit. It's coming up on us pretty quick. Thank you for that. Is anyone else here that would like to address council at this time? Thank you. Item 14 are mayor items. A couple of items that I'd like to remind you of, Peaches and Beaches are coming, and that's going to be March the 13th and 14th, as I understand it, that Friday and Saturday. So we'll have, you know, several thousand people coming into downtown Perry at that time, so we'd ask everybody to be cautious and safe during that period, and find something that you need to take home from Peaches and Beaches. And I would also follow up on Ms. Turpin's discussion around the International Festival. That is going to be one of the biggest events that we've had in the City of Perry. I don't know, is it 20 countries that are represented now, or more?
I would say more than 30.
More than 30 countries? There's going to be food, there's going to be entertainment, three stages, so it's going to be seven hours long, as I understand it.
Yes, sir.
From 11 a.m. to 6 p.m. on the 21st of March, and I would encourage everybody to try to plan to attend it. I think it's going to be a very fun event. Thank you. Is there anything else, council members, that you'd like to bring forward this evening at this time? Hearing none. At this time, we will stand determined.